Hello, everybody. Welcome to the January 11th Board of Selectmen meeting. Please rise. Almost did again. So pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I have a short thing to read followed by a moment of silence for Gerald Walls. Jerry Walls passed away on December 22nd at age 86. He was a graduate of Rockland High in the University of Massachusetts Amherst. He was inducted into Rockland's Athletic Hall of Fame for his accomplishments in football and track, and inducted into Abington's Athletic Hall of Fame as assistant coach of the 1981 Abington High School Girls, Massachusetts State Championship basketball team. Jerry was a beloved teacher and coach and taught school in Abington for 28 years, retiring in 1995. He also scored the last seven points scored by the Abington Old Town Football Team, scoring a touchdown and kicking the extra point. Jerry be greatly missed by his wife, Eileen, family, and friends. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. On a happier note, the Board of Selectmen wish to extend the belated 100th birthday he wishes to a million pastusak known as Tualas Skinny. Skinny was born on January 3rd, 1921. He grew up in North Abington along with his younger brother Walter and attended Abington schools. He joined the Marines for World War II in 1942 and served in the Pacific. When he was discharged, he returned to Abington and received an associate history in construction management from Wentworth and became a carpenter. He married Veronica Chadwick from Rockland and built their house at 177 Wheel Street in 1951 where they still live. They have one son, John. In the early 1960s, Skinny was one of the founders of the Abington Midget Football League, and his own team Pasta Max Pantlers also served as longtime member and chairman of the Abington Housing Authority. In 1968, Skinny became a teacher at social vocational high school, passing on his knowledge of construction to others. He retired in 1983, but still continued to do carpentry products for people. He is also an avid woodworker who continues to create sought-after wood carvings, which he sells at craft fairs around the South Shore. Skinny is also an avid car player, bridge, and poker, and cannot wait for the pandemic to end so he can resume these games. In his 100 years of life and still going, Skinny has served his family, community, and students very well. The Abington Board of Selectmen are honored to present Skinny with the Abington Post cane, which we'll do in person when we can do so. But happy birthday, Skinny.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Any other public announcements? Mike, you got any?
Nope, nothing tonight.
Kevin?
Nothing.
Jim?
Nothing.
Alex, anything?
I just want to give a shout out. Congratulations to Matt McGuire from the high school basketball team who hit 1,000 points over the weekend. And from what I understand, that was the fastest anyone's hit the 1,000 mark. And I believe there's only five in the history of the school that have done so. So congratulations to Matt McGuire.
He narrowly passed me by 1,000 points, but
That's all.
One other announcement, the Abington Police will be hosting the Craft Family Blood Drive on Saturday, January 23rd from 8:00 a.m. to 2:30. To make an appointment, you can call 617-632-3206. Appointments are recommended, but walk-ins, they'll take walk-ins as time allows. So that's Saturday, January 23rd from 8:00 to 2:30. So if you can donate blood, please do. Public appointments. Yes, the Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Monday, November 9th at 7:10 p.m. on Zoom for a commercial garage license for Johanna Viagra, DBA Alliance Auto Service at 43 Highland Road. So am I saying that right, Johanna? Are you on? Is anybody hearing anything?
Sounds like I'm listening to someone's TV.
Kevin, can you unmute Janaya? I would try the phone number first and see if that, we'll see if that's Janaya. Gone.
And she's gone.
I mean, it is a little early, right? So maybe they're not on yet.
There's no time.
34 minutes early.
Well, this is a, is this a continued hearing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. How about unmute Vinnie because Vinnie owns the property?
Yep. How you doing?
Hi, Vinnie.
Good.
We're looking for Janaya. Is she on? Do you know?
I don't know. I'm at home myself, so I don't know.
Because we're not, we're not seeing her on this. Did she indicate that she would be on? Did you talk with her?
I believe so, yes, absolutely.
Well, if the Board wishes, we can move on and
Maybe come back.
Take a recess on this hearing for now. We haven't officially reopened it anyway, so we can come back if she was expecting a later time, maybe.
Okay.
Sure.
That's fine.
So we, I do see we have Joe Armstrong on. I believe he's here for the common vehicular license for the New Englander Restaurants LLC, DBA Ole Ole and Tina, 800 Brockton Avenue, Suite 1. Joe, you on?
Yes.
All right, at least something's working today. How are you?
Not bad. Yourself?
So forgive us as we go through the paperwork here, just going out of order here. But you're looking to get a common vehicular license for this is the old Sticks and Stones location, correct?
Correct.
All right. So are you the owner?
Yes.
So what are you looking to do? What's changing here? What will be new?
Totally new concept. There's no more billiards. They did lease Suite 1, 2, and 3. I'm only leasing Suite 1. So it's just a restaurant with a bar.
Okay, so that that square footage is not the same as Sticks and Stones was or
No.
Other suites?
No, it's approximately 3400 square feet now that I'm leasing.
Okay. And your hours, you're going to be Monday through Friday, 12 to 10, Saturday, 12 to 12, and Sunday, 12 to 10?
Yeah.
Now, had you worked there previously at the other location or?
I was, I was leasing the kitchen since January.
Okay.
So, you know, I took over chef then and leased in the kitchen and whatnot.
And you were doing the farmers market
Yes, sir.
wasn't you?
Yes.
So you went in at the worst possible time, I guess, in January.
Yeah. Yep.
What's, well, we have to open this anyway, don't we?
I don't have a, it's not a public hearing according to my paperwork.
Okay, then what's going on with the liquor license?
Liquor license, all the licenses were supposed to be renewed by them, but then at the last minute, they decided they weren't going to renew. They were supposed to transfer over to me. But so I had to do everything on my own. I have my insurance company. As of tomorrow, I'm picking up insurance. And so from what I understand, I can't put in the license until I have the insurance binder. So I'll be doing that.
So that'll be one of our future meetings then?
Yes, sir. Same with the entertainment license. I don't plan on having entertainment, but just in case, you know, I host a party that needs a DJ or I bring in a mariachi band or something like that, you know?
Yep. So for right now, you're just getting the common vic license.
Yes, sir.
And you're working on the others.
Yes.
So, yeah. Just so you know, we waived the liquor license fees for this year, so that'll maybe help me a little bit.
Oh, nice. Thank you.
So Mr. Chairman, what do we, this isn't a public hearing, so we
No, I guess the motion would be to approve the common vic license. Are there any other questions from the Board before? No, seeing none, I'll take a motion.
We'll make that motion to approve.
Second.
Any more discussion? Now, I can't see anybody that doesn't have their video. So if you, if you want to talk to that, turn the video on and indicate to me that you had a question or anything, but but seeing none, all those in favor of approving the convict license for New Englander Restaurant LLC, say aye.
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 Unanimous, that is approved. Joe, good luck with everything.
Thank you so much. You guys have a blessed night.
You too. So I do see Joe and I are on now, so if we want, we can go back to that. And I'll take a motion to reopen this hearing that was put into recess on November 9th.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed, the hearing is open. Okay, there you are. Sorry, Joe and I couldn't find you there. Welcome.
Hi.
So you are applying for a license for a commercial garage?
Correct.
And what business is this at now?
I don't get the question. What do you mean?
Yeah, I was kind of asking myself the question. This is, okay, Alliance Auto Service, that's, so it's 43 Highland, Highland Road. So welcome. Tell us what you're looking to do.
Well, hi, everybody. My name is Jonaya Vega. I'm looking to open up a car detailing service, auto services business that will service oil changes, the detailing of the cars. The place that I have has about three lifts. It has about it has nine parking spots. It has just, it's the perfect location that I need to run this business. Trying to trying to the location that I found there, like the business that I have is basically all types of, you know, relationships that I've come with through my car detailing, you know, just it's, I'm just trying to open up the business for the car.
Okay, where are you working out of now?
Right now, I'm a probation officer out of Fall River, Bristol Superior Co. House. I'm also a, I also have my own basketball program through Brockton, the community of Brockton. I, I also, I detail cars on the side. You know, I literally am going nonstop 24/7.
Okay, any questions from the Board?
Does this be like a second job or a third job for you?
This would, this would be my job after the probation, after being a probation officer.
Work all day and then go detail cars?
So I would just, so let me just explain. So I've been doing that for, for a long time. I've been, I've been coaching and I've been detailing cars for a long time. I've never actually started my own business. Like, I've never actually like officially, like, you know, got a space. I've always done it, you know, on like mobile. I've done it on the side, you know? It's just never been something that's licensed. So now, that's what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to take the next steps to, you know, secure this, this place so that I can start building a future for my daughters. Like, I have to have something to fall back on besides just being a probation officer. And I don't know if you know, but like the last, like the last year because of COVID, a lot, like I've only been at work, I'm only at work either three days or two days a week. So I have a lot of spare time on my hands. Kids are doing virtual schooling. So now, more than anything is the time that I need to, you know, to get my feet wet and stop making more connections and, you know, I want to start this business because this is something that I've always wanted to do. And now, more than anything, this is, I feel like this is the right time. I have everything lined up. I have, you know, contractors in place. I have, you know, I have, I have a plan.
So are you gonna continue as a probation officer?
Yes. So my plan is to work there, work at probation full-time. Like I said, I'm only there either Monday, Wednesday, or Friday for that for a week, or I'm there either Tuesday or Thursday the other week. So there's going to be weeks that I can be there, two days, two, no, three full days or maybe two full days. But every night, I'll be able to, you know, check in with my, my, check in with the business. I already have, you know, auto mechanics. I have, you know, the employees lined up. I have people that will be managing the place while I'm not there. Like, I have licensed mechanics that will be doing this stuff, you know? I have everything in line, in order.
Your application says that you're a sole proprietor and you'll have no one working for you in any capacity.
Well, that's because when, when I signed the paperwork, like I can't hire anybody. Like, I have, like, this, like I said, this is all a new process to me. So when I filled out that paperwork, I did speak with Nancy about it. And at that point in time, it was because I didn't have like a payroll. I didn't have anybody on a payroll right then and there. But once the business is up and running, I'll be able to get the employees and I'll have all that stuff.
You don't have insurance yet either?
I don't, no. And that's because I don't have the license yet.
Okay, and you're also, you're aware that as part of our process, we ask the police chief and, and maybe the building department, the fire chief, depending on what's going on, whether or not they'd recommend. And you're aware that the police chief is recommending that we refuse this license.
Am I allowed to speak on that?
Yeah, absolutely. That's why you're here.
So, no, I just wanted to, you know, I really wanted to express the fact that I didn't meet with the chief of police. I, I made up a meet, I made a set of a meeting so that we can go to get everything out there on the opens. First time that we've ever even spoke about, like, I've never even had knowledge of the incident that he's talking about. I was very compliant. I've never been not compliant. I've reached, I've been very open with resolving anything that has to do with what he needs from me. Like, so as far as, you know, this, I don't know what else to say regarding that besides the fact that my reputation from Brockton would, I feel like it would, I don't know the word I'm looking for, but like, I'm very well, I'm very well-known in Brockton. Like, I don't know if you guys know, like, like I said, I'm, I'm a coach. I've coached for years. I was a teacher. I worked for DYS. Very involved in the community. I, I, I'm in the Hall of Fame at Massa Sawyer. I've just been very open, was trying to resolve any issues that have been coming with this. I know at the, at the, at the end of the, the paper that he had wrote, it said that he was unable to be reached. I'm able to be reached on all platforms, phone, telephone, you name it. I'm there. I'm not, I'm not a hard person to get in touch with.
So you said you have no knowledge of that incident he's talking about?
He's, in the report, he claims that I spoke with the police officer. That I have, on the end of the report, it said that I, I don't have it in front of me right now, but it did say that I was not this thing killed me. It just basically said that I wasn't, I wasn't able to be reached and that he, I wasn't, what's it called?
I'm talking about the involvement. You're saying that you had no knowledge of the
No, and that too. I had no, when I'm, when
And they're saying that they spoke to someone, and I don't want to get into too much, well, I guess it's public record. So they're saying that they spoke to the detective and that you, in fact, rented the van.
I, again, I have been nothing but open with that whole incident.
Is that true that you rented the van?
I honestly, I honestly have never seen a report. I don't even know what he's talking about.
Did you rent a U-Haul van that was used in a crime?
I honestly, I don't know. I, I was never notified by anybody about my renting of a U-Haul van being involved in any crimes.
Did you ever rent a U-Haul van?
I've rented U-Haul vans numerous times, probably about like three or four times.
You ever rent a U-Haul van to let someone else drive it?
Well, that person in the, that's listed in there, that's my sister. I don't know any, I don't know anything.
So you're saying that this police report done by Lieutenant Sullivan is not accurate?
Correct. And that's why I've been, I took, I've taken all these processes, like I've notified my chief, my chief of probation. She's the one who actually, you know, gave me the, the steps that I should take to even resolve this. I have a lawyer as well.
And what courthouse do you work out of?
I work out of Fall River Superior.
I just rented a U-Haul truck.
I'm sorry, Jim.
I just rented a U-Haul truck a couple of weeks ago and I had to show my driver's license in order to get it. So, you know, if you rented it and it's in your name, I'm pretty sure you had to be there to, to rent it.
The only thing I can say about that is me and my sister look identical. We're 19, we're 17 months apart.
Did she have your driver's license?
She could have. I'm not, I mean, it was in 2019. She did live with me at one point. I'm not sure the timeline, but I know for a fact that I wasn't involved in any, I've never even been in trouble. My wife's, my, everything is squeaky clean and I've never, and back to this whole report, like I knew nothing about it until the town manager called my phone and told me. If this happened in 2019 and I'm, we spoke, I believe it was in September. That was the first time I've ever heard anything about it. I gave them all my work schedule. I gave, I gave, like I said, I had a lawyer. He dug deep into it. He talked to the chief of police. And that was the outcome that we had out of it. But at the end of the day, I wanted to still move forward with this because I stand firm on me. I believe in me.
I guess the point we're trying to make, I mean, did you meet with Chief Majewski? Did you have a meeting with him?
Yes, I did.
All right, because I think that's one thing that's not clear right now. Stop me if I'm wrong, guys. This is the interview you guys were talking about, am I correct, Alex? Alex, you're frozen at the moment.
But yeah, yeah, Mike, that's what we were talking about.
I mean, that, that's the interviewing, so I mean, that's where we're having a tough time here.
Any other questions from the Board? I know there's a few people from the public on. I don't know if they have any questions. If they, if they do, this is the time for public comment on this hearing. So Vinnie, Bill, Nancy, I see your names, but I Nancy, I see you just on, you're unmuted. Did you have a question?
Yeah. Hi, Tim. It's actually Ann Welch.
Oh, hi, Ann. How are you?
Good. Highland Road. I had a handful of questions. First of all, I mean, I have a copy of the application, so the neighborhood, I'm representing the neighbors, we were curious as to exactly what kind of auto services she was going to provide. And she's saying that it would only be like detailing and oil changes. But the other thing we're concerned about is that she, if she's only renting one bay and she's saying she's only going to be working on three cars at a time and she has no employees, which she now has said why she doesn't have an exact count of employees. Why does she need 15 customer spaces and three employee spaces? There's only 27 spaces in that lot and there are other tenants in there. So if she's taking up 18 of 27, I'm just, and there's another bay still left open to be leased. I'm a little bit confused and I'm a little bit concerned. The other thing we wanted to get confirmation on is that she's not planning on selling any cars because we don't want it to turn into the used junk lot that it has been in the past. And that the repair work she's doing is going to be kept to the inside of that bay. And also, when her customers come to pick up their vehicles, they're not going to be testing them up and down our street or up and around the building, which is a problem we had with the previous tenant. And that her parking was going to be limited to right outside those bays and not across the street in the dirt lot. And I think that about covers it.
Janaya, do you want to speak to any of those questions?
I mean, I know that, I know that seven of the parking spots, let me get out my paperwork. I don't, I don't, only nine of those spots are in, like, nine of those spots are inside of the building. It comes with the property.
But there's, there's no spaces inside the building. That's where the work is done.
I mean, I think, I think we might have it a little bit confused. I'm saying that like the I'm just trying to get it out real quick.
I mean, you wouldn't have cars in there where you're doing work on vehicles.
No, but I'm saying, what I was saying was at the at the end of the night, when like, if we're working on cars, like we have nine specific spots that are ours that come with the, the rent, that come with what we're, what I, what I got.
So you're going to be working in the middle of the parking lot, doing work in the parking lot?
No. Inside of the
There's only five, there's only five bays in each of those, and you're saying that you're going to be using three of them.
My shop comes with two bays that are connected. It's like, it, it's like a square. It goes like this.
So you're taking both of the vacant
Yes.
bays?
Yes.
Well, that's 10 spots. And that's not what this application says. Says you're only going to be working on three cars.
Vinnie, if you're on, maybe you could speak, being the property owner, you can clear this up. Can you unmute? Or Kevin, can we unmute Vinnie?
It's just, it's, I guess it's just the way the building is set up. We, we can, it's, it's just set up like that so that we can park the cars there at night.
Janaya, let me explain some of the stuff here, okay? Yeah, the bay is 2,500 square feet, okay? It can fit nine cars inside. There'll be outside parking as well. She's doing contract with Amazon, with the, some of the vans, doing oil changes, brake jobs, and, and the detailing, okay? But it has gas traps in the bay. It's been approved by the building department. It's been a garage and approved by the fire department. It's approved from every agency from the town. The parking is the same outside as J&amp;G had. J&amp;G did have a used car license. And I'm sorry, Ann, you feel it. There was a lot of junk cars out there, but there wasn't any, okay? Um, and I'm sorry, Ian, you feel it, there was a lot of junk cars out there, but there wasn't any, okay? Uh, it's one of the cleanest garages, uh, in the town, uh, and been always maintained, uh, that way.
I won't debate that on this.
Well, I understand that, but you have a comment to make, but you really should, you know, keep it to what you need to be.
All right, guys, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ian and Vinnie, just.
That's all right.
Um, you can answer the questions, but if you have any further questions, please come back to me. So go ahead, Vinnie, you can continue.
Okay, yeah, I mean, it has gas traps in the, in the bay, uh, which is, is required for a commercial garage license. It separates oil and water, you know, from, from, uh, mixing, uh, outside, um. The maximum spill system in the building. Uh, there's nothing it doesn't have, it's been a, been a garage since I think the first day we ever opened. And the first tenants that ever went in there was, was a garage, uh, so. That was that, um, but, uh, she's got hired quali- she'll be hiring qualified people to do the repair work. That are certified, uh, mechanics. Yeah, I don't have any problem with it, plenty of parking, and if I was the over, the parking lot across the street, okay? Uh, that's way, basically an overflow, and as long as the registered cars are there, okay, there's not unregistered's, okay? We use it as an overflow parking spot, for all of the businesses there. When the cable studio is there, okay, and you were there, you were there for thirty years, they used to use that parking lot to park in. When they had meetings, they had town meetings there, they had any kind of event. I, I run and control that a lot also, so we'll, that'll still be used as an overflow parking spot, okay? We don't interrupt with the flow of traffic on Highland Road, so, uh, for that reason. But I can use that parking lot across the street. So, not, uh, off limits, it's not, uh. It's highway commercial property also, so it's, it's in the same zone, uh, and it can be used for an overflow parking.
So, so Vinnie, on her application, she has number of cars for her P A three, customer space is fifteen, number employee space is three. Those are the same numbers as the previous tenant?
I believe they are, uh, unfortunately, I didn't see her application before she turned it in.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, uh, so I'm a little, uh, not, you know, like, I can't answer to what she's got there, but. But there's plenty of rover room for any additional parking if need be. We don't like to keep stars overnight. The cars that would be there would be, as if it kept inside, as it'd be worked on, and anything that's left. Uh, or been dropped off would be parked on the pavement, uh, where the building is, uh, plenty of parking there. So, there's no issues with parking the sixty-five, I think the sixty-five parking spots in that whole property.
Thank you, Vinnie, uh, Ian, did you have any other questions?
Yeah, I would, um, I would go back again and reiterate that. I have a copy of a plan that the previous tenant, when they submitted their application. And it, I only count twenty-seven parking spots. They had said they were gonna be working on eight cars. They were only looking for eight customer spaces, they had three employees, so they were only looking for eleven spaces. So they were gonna be working on more vehicles, but ask for less spaces. My concern is, is that it threw up a red flag for me when I saw eighteen parking spaces to be working on three cars. And I, what if, what, and I in- immediately started to think, are they gonna start selling cars? Because the previous tenant on their original application never indicated that they were gonna be selling anything. That came in after the fact and none of us knew. Until we started seeing there being a lot of activity there with people coming and looking at things in the middle of that parking lot, so. I just wanna make sure that we're all very clear on what her intentions are, what you are authorizing her to do. And that that doesn't change midstream.
Thank you, man, like, I mean, if she does wanna sell cars, she would have to come for another, a different license anyway, so. We can address when she does, I don't wanna.
I don't have any intentions on selling cars.
Him, I think that what is often forgotten here, especially by Mr. DeAndrea. Is that while his property may be highway commercial, it is the entrance to a neighborhood. A neighborhood which is lovely, once you get to the houses, but until you get to the houses, it's a dump.
Okay, well, that's, we'll, uh, leave it at that, if there's no further questions, then. Um, any more public comment from anybody?
Yeah, I'd like to add to some of that. She, she needs to understand that when J and G Performance was there, they sold motorcycles and they worked on motorcycles. They weren't working on as many cars, they did have a mechanic that worked on cars, but when they say they had. Eighteen or something cars in, in, in the bay, they were motorcycles, okay? And they had to be in the town for at least a year or two before they could apply for a used car license. Okay, they had to apply, okay, so. She's trying to, it's, it indicates something that's not happened yet.
Hey, I totally understand, I wanna keep it to this license and this, this owner operator.
Yeah, hold somebody else hostage for something else that's, okay?
Thank you. Anybody from the board have any questions?
Um, I don't have any questions, but I, I think, um, from my perspective, I, I'd like to make a motion. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to continue, I'd request, um, I'd like to see three professional references. I think that'd be good in this situation, just with, um, you know, with this report and stuff, it's kinda opens us some eyes. I'd also like to see insurance prior to occupancy, and I'd like to know how many employees are gonna be in there, um, my motion would be to continue. Um, with that information, maybe at the next meeting.
Good night, do you think you could have that information for the next meeting, which would be January twenty-fifth, I believe, is our next scheduled?
So I just have, I would just have one question about that. I, um, so how would I be able to get the insurance without a license?
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, I don't know, but require insurance prior to occupancy. Sorry, my, uh, my motion be to continue the hearing and then insurance prior to occupancy. These three professional references, and just to know how many employees are gonna be in there before. How many employees are gonna be working there?
So, I do have three, I do, I don't have, um, it on my drive so that I can send it to you guys, but I do have, I did. Come prepared with, you know, letters of support, letters and references with me, so, um.
Does the motion on flood, does anybody wish to second that?
I'll second Kevin's motion.
Okay, motion is made and seconded, discussion on the motion to continue the hearing to January twenty-fifth, uh, yes, January twenty-fifth. No further discussion then, all those in favor of continuing, say aye.
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 All those opposed? That's unanimous, we're gonna continue to the tw- twenty-fifth of January. And we'll set a time, and, and if you could just forward, you said you have those letters of, um, recommendation or professional references. If you could just follow those two there before that, and Kevin, just, if you wanna explain, what, what do you look for for the insurance? I don't wanna mess it up.
Oh, I just would like to see insurance prior to occupancy.
Okay.
And, and I know with the employees, I'd just like to, like to know, how many employees are you gonna have, and I know it's kind of up in the air right now, but. Like to have an idea of what, what are you gonna have for employees?
Well, I. So I, just two things, um. There, there would only be four employees employed there, and the other question that I had was. I just wanted to make it clear, so I'm supposed to, I'm supposed to get the insurance before?
You can go to your.
Alex, you try that again, we couldn't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, you can go to your insurance agent and you can get an insurance binder, which will be subject to the license approval.
Oh.
The other question I had, uh, I had some problems with my internet, but, uh, I don't remember why this was continued in November. Could someone answer that?
They, uh, they didn't, they didn't show up for the meeting if.
No, no, I was told not to come.
Okay, they didn't have something, Scott.
We, we were actually awaiting, the chief, um, had sent a red flag. And wanted Janaya to meet with the chief and then wanted more information from the chief.
Okay. Okay.
All right, so we continue to the twenty-fifth, um, it'll probably be right around the same time, we'll let you know for sure. And in the meantime, if you could email over those, uh, references and the, um. Insurance information, once you're able to obtain that, that'd be great, and hopefully everything can go quickly on the twenty-fifth. All right, thank you. So next up on the agenda will be the vote to approve the minutes on December fourteenth, twenty twenty. I assume everybody has the packet, was able to read through them.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor of approving the minutes from December fourteenth, twenty twenty, say aye.
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 That's unanimous, minutes are approved. Uh, next up is request for appointed to Affordable Housing Trust Committee. Um, Scott, you wanna speak on the makeup of this committee?
Yeah, so as you recall, at town meeting, we passed the new bylaw that'll establish the, an affordable housing trust. Uh, the makeup of the committee, um, there's, well, there, there's certain, there, there. Certain, uh, time requirements, one person is one year, one person might be two years, but so that the, the, um. They don't all come up for reappointment at the same time. Uh, there's four people that are appointed by the Board of Selectmen and then one member of the Board of Selectmen to be on this trust. Uh, and then the trust document, as you recall, at town meeting, this trust, once it's established. Uh, they have the ability to actually, um, go out and, and they could, um, you know, procure a project, procure a property. Um, do whatever is necessary to supply, um, affordable housing and senior housing.
Can we make this motion, um, all in one?
Uh, you can make it all in one, and I think, um. Um, we could, well, first, we would wanna know who the selectmen are going to appoint from the selectmen, whichever one of you.
We don't know how your screen's set up, Jim, according to mine.
That is on the Affordable Housing Trust. Uh, so, uh.
How are we gonna determine who's one year, two years, and three years? How are we doing that?
Um, we could probably wait till the first, I, I think if you, if we appoint everybody, we'll have the trust meet. They'll establish who's gonna be the, their chair, and I think we can decide then who's going to be when.
Okay.
There'll be a member of the Board of Selectmen on it, we can bring that back to the selectmen. Uh, the, the ability, really what I'm looking to do here is just to try to get this started and get it kickstarted. We're still awaiting certification from the state on town meeting and on the actual article. Um, but when, you know, once we get that certification, there is, there is money. Um, that was appropriated at the prior meeting, prior town meeting, and we, um. We obviously wanna get this up and running and, and get that money into the trust and, and start work. We have, you know, we have, um. Buildings that, we have the Central Street School, or the North School, and, um. You know, uh, you know, other pieces of property that we'd like to move on, and they may become part of the project of, of, of this committee, so. Uh, the sooner we get it established, the sooner we can hit the ball, hit the road running with it, that's all.
Okay, so as far as the selectmen is, who's interested in serving?
Mike.
Nominate Mike Collagey.
Is there a second, Jim?
I'll second him.
All right, so, Mike Collagey is nominated and seconded by Jim. All those in favor of appointing Mike as the selectman representative, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, congratulations, Mike. Um, so now a motion, looks like we have four applicants for four positions, so that we could probably do this all in one motion. Somebody wanted to make that motion and read the names, please.
Um, I'd make the motion to appoint Bruce Hughes, Ken Coyle, Ellen Delaney, and Jennifer Brady Sullivan to the Affordable Housing Trust Committee.
I'll second.
Any further discussion on our appointments? All those in favor of appointing Bruce Hughes, Ken Coyle, Ellen Delaney, and Jennifer Brady Sullivan to the Affordable Housing Trust Committee, say aye.
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 Aye, that's unanimous, committee's all set, thank you, Scott. Um, now, up next is, uh, operational update and fire station building project update from Chief Nottall, Chief, thanks for joining us.
Hey, gentlemen, thank you, and Sue, thank you, and any residents out there, um, watching. Um, I wasn't quite sure what you're looking for, so, and we have been very busy over the last several months at the fire department. As most departments in town have, so I, I prepared just a, a general update in a number of areas. Ending with an update, a brief update on the fire department building, um, committee project, if that's okay with you. I'm not sure what your agenda is, but so I'm just gonna go down the list, if you will. Um, in terms of personnel, we're very fortunate that firefighter paramedic Lily Gen- Genity just graduated from Mass Fire Academy last Friday. This was a hybrid academy, the, um, the remote schooling has certainly hit the fire department as well as all of our children as well. Uh, and she did a great job with this, she had a couple of potential scares with, um, having COVID positive contacts. She tested out, um, negative each time, she's quite a true, but she didn't have the benefit of a large. Uh, fire academy graduation ceremony, which is usually inherent with these. Uh, I think she's just happy to be working on ship, which she begins tomorrow, so, again, we welcome Lily, she's done a great job. I know you met her in person, when, the last time you had a meeting back in the, uh, in the fall. So she's been through the whole academy, she's fully trained, and she's doing great, so I wanna, you know, welcome her back. Um, in terms of the fire apparatus, we've had a lot going on with that in all aspects. The, the three engines, the older engines that we had, some money voted for at town meeting to get rehab. The first engine is back, engine two, which is the two thousand and two Central States, it looks brand new. It's not brand new, but it looks brand new, and we've certainly added a lot of life to that. It's not quite in service yet, cause we're still waiting to do some work on the wheels to, to finish that off. Uh, it has the same paint scheme and marking scheme as, as our newest engine four, as well as the tower truck. And when we're all done with this project, the entire fleet, for the first time, I think, ever is, is gonna be standardized, it's, it's all gonna be. Uh, that the black cab over the red body in the same somewhat, um, diminished, but I think classy looking. Lettering on everything, the whole fleet's gonna look great, um, as well as it's safer, because engine two had some very serious. Uh, structural as well as cosmetic, um, just body rot, it was, it was dangerous to work around, it was a sharp vehicle, you had to be very careful. So that truck's like new, almost, and it's almost in service. Engine three is gonna be going in later this month. They have the same treatment, where it does not need as much work, uh, that's our nine, our two thousand seven E one. That is primary at Station Two right now. All of these trucks, at one point, were the primary truck in town. And just, as we get newer trucks as we go, they just go down one level each time, but they're still well-used and, and very busy. Uh, once engine three is done, then our last engine, engine one, which is nineteen ninety-six, it's gonna be almost twenty-five years old. But we're, that's gonna get a simple paint job, we're, we're trying to get a few more years out of that one as well. So that project is moving, uh, very well, and I think the, the town's gonna be very proud how, how the fire appa- apparatus looks. You're not gonna see the body rot that we've had for years, we're trying to maintain those. Um, C two, which is the deputy fire chief's car, that's a Ford Explorer, that went in the service a couple of months ago. Uh, replacing the car that he had, which was a former, um, fire chief's car, it was my chief. And two of my predecessors all drove that vehicle, that is a very tired vehicle, so he really needed to get that replaced. We're keeping that as an administrative vehicle, which will just have very limited use, but we're, we're keeping that in the department, uh, to give it a rest. C nineteen, this is a new vehicle we have, and I'm gonna speak more at length on this under a different report, but. This is a white Chevy Tahoe that we got, and it's a. An emergency medical service command vehicle, I'm gonna explain a little bit more on that one later, as, as well as how we were able to obtain that. The forest fire truck has been ordered, that was part of the FEMA grant for two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That two of our firefighters, uh, put together, that has been ordered, it's being built as we speak. With a delivery estimate probably of June, there's somewhat of a backlog on that, although we should hopefully get that right as. Although we should hopefully get that right as we get into the dry summer months, which is a perfect time on that. The ISU, that's the Incident Support Unit, which is that big black, um, trailer that you see, that, that once in a while it's parked at North School, mainly because if they're doing work behind our station, we couldn't get it out. We've completely reconfigured that for COVID operations, and I'll, I'll explain more on that in a bit. We have new computers and a specialized response software that has been added to every piece of fire apparatus in the fleet, fire and EMS. That was also paid for by a community grant that firefighter Chris O'Toole was able to put together. There, we had training on that today, and they're going in service this week. Part of that software program is a new burning permit program. Open Burning starts this Friday, the fifteenth, and we're gonna have this in place just in time for that, and we're gonna ask the residents to please give us a little bit of leeway, as it's, we're probably expecting to work out some bugs with new software. Uh, the benefit of, of including this burning permit software with the software on the the fire apparatus response computers, is we're gonna be able to see where the, the, all of the permits are in town, once this is done. So if we get a call for smoke while we're out in the bow, we, we can look and, you know, there, there may be a, a legal permit somewhere in that area and that, that is gonna assist us in, in responding to, to investigate those calls. So the apparatus is in great shape, we, I can't thank the residents in, in this board and previous boards enough for, for supporting us. We're really at, at a great point in all of our, our entire fleet, not even just the, the, the engines, the administrative vehicles, we're in great shape, the ambulance is everything, I'm gonna speak much more on the ambulance in a moment. The fire stations, this is not the fire station project, this is just the, the existing stations. Uh, we're right in the middle of the boiler replacement program, um, that was voted and approved at the special time meeting in the fall. This is gonna replace both boilers at both fire stations, and I know this is questionable, uh, because we're going for a new fire station, and, and I'd like to explain this again. This project has slowed down a bit because of COVID quarantining with some of the the vendors and the, the service techs able to come out to actually, uh, prepare and then install these new boilers, which is exactly the reason we wanted them, because traditionally, each winter, we suffer numerous breakdowns of both existing boilers at both stations. And there's no, nothing to indicate that was not gonna happen again this year. The, the critical difference this year is if our, um, vendors who are able to work in the old boilers, for whatever re- reason, are not able to commit to the station, or they're quarantined, we could lose the stations if they froze. You know, we, we used to have a twenty-four hour service when they come out, which is also expensive. But if for some reason they're not able to work on these, and we cannot maintain heat in these buildings, these are very old, specialized in somewhat Mickey Mouse boilers that we have now, and it, it's almost an artwork with, when these vendors come out to to bring new life in them and repair them, we really couldn't risk that, with, with, with everything going on. There was some, some, some real risk of seriously damaging the fire stations if they broke down and were not able to be serviced over the winter. So that's the reason we're doing it. Um, they begin today at Station Two, dropping off the new boiler there. Station Two is gonna be installed this week, next week, we're gonna have Station One done. The asbestos has been removed from both boiler rooms completely, uh, we, that was the first step we had to do. There is still asbestos throughout the buildings, but at least in the boiler rooms, we had them completely abated, that was step one. Step two is, they, they're prepping now for the, the new burners to go in. Uh, the burners will be going in this week and early next week. The final step, once that's completed, is they have to re-insulate all those pipes that we removed all of the insulation from. Uh, because it's not just to, to retain the heat on those pipes, it also prevents the condensation in the summertime with the cooler pipes that would cause water around about electrical, so we're, we're gonna get those insulated. Um, is the final stage on that, and, and all of, the, the funding should be sufficient, because the asbestos estimate came in somewhat below what we initially were getting estimates for, so, so far that project is, is going well. It's not the ideal timing to do it, but it is what it is, we're gonna get that done. Any questions so far, or at the end I'll have time for questions, so. COVID operations, as you can imagine, this department has, we have completely retooled how we operate every aspect of this department over the last year, um, and, and even over the last couple of months, i- is, is we're seeing a spike again. We, we're averaging probably since November, one to three positive patients that we're transporting in the ambulances a day. So we're seeing it, there's, there's no question, and I can honestly say, and I'm very proud of the, the, the members that we have for really being very careful in, in heating, um, all of the recommendations and, and policies that we, we have put into place. We have not had a single positive employee since this has begun. Knock on wood, it's either we're doing a great job, and maybe there's a little bit of luck, whatever it is, we're very proud of that, we've been very fortunate. Um, we're one of the rare departments in the area not to have a positive case, to be honest with you, we're keeping everybody working. We are doing some limited PCR testing with the fire in the police department. Now that Car nineteen that we have, we, we, we call it CB nineteen, Command Vehicle nineteen, how can we not call it that? Because it was paid for and funded by the CARES Act, and what this is, is, is a white Chevy Tahoe that it looks different from most of our apparatus, we're trying to have it look a little bit different, it's a little bit more discreet. It, it's not the, you know, the, the bright red and, and all the other decals we have, it's somewhat diminished on, on how we have it um, marked as an emergency vehicle. This is set up as an emergency medical command vehicle, which we have never had before, and it's fully outfitted with cardiac monitors, um, all of the paramedic equipment that goes with it, and right now it's set up for testing. And we're doing some limited, uh, PCR testing right now with the fire in the police, a lot of this is behind the scenes, and we're, we're kinda keeping quiet about it. Uh, we're keeping people working, both fire and police, and there's been a lot of that going on. That vehicle has been, um, I have assigned that vehicle to our EMS coordinator, um, twenty-four hours a day, he actually takes it home with him, because twenty-four hours a day, he's actually been doing testing or assisting with questions as needed, in conjunction with Board of Health. Um, we have a great relationship with the police, I have been speaking with Chief Cutter almost every day. It's going good, and we're, we're trying to keep his staff and my staff safe and working as best we can, because it doesn't take much to, to literally put half of one of our departments out of commission in quarantine, if one member comes in and unknowingly infects or, um, contain possibly, you know, comes in contact with an ongoing shift or an outgoing shift, you could literally lose half your department. We're seeing that in the area, that, that actually has happened in, in different area departments. Uh, we're trying to minimize that, and so far we've done it. So we're doing a lot of proactive preventative work, somewhat under the radar, to, to make sure that just everybody's safe and working. Um, that, that project is, is going extremely well. The next step is the vaccinations, they're going to begin this week for police and fire. Uh, we've had, again, a number of meetings with police, fire, Board of Health, and the best way to, to, to make this go forward, because we can't just, you know, once the vaccinations are here, just give everybody the vaccination the first round and be done with it, because there is a risk of, there could be some reactions, or just people feeling lousy after getting any vaccination, especially somewhat of a new one, especially after the second dose, that's what we're hearing. Uh, this vaccination comes in two doses, you get the initial vaccination, and then, uh, either twenty-one, twenty-eight days later, depending on which, um, which one you're getting, whether it's Pfizer or the Moderna, you get your second vaccination, in the second vaccination, from what we're hearing, there is a higher risk that people can get just be sick for a day or two. So with that in mind, we have to be careful, we don't infect both entire departments and put everybody else sick, so we're splitting both departments in two groups. The first groups are gonna get their shots that won it this Wednesday. The second half of our departments are gonna get it a week from now, next Wednesday. And then conversely, their second doses will be in two weeks in February, so that we're, we're making sure we're diluting the, the workforce, so that in the event anybody does come down not feeling good, which we hope they don't, but if they do, we haven't shut down both departments overnight. So there's been a lot of coordination with that, with our, my EMS coordinator, Justin Silver and his staff, with the Board of Health and their staff, and myself and Chief Cutter have done a lot of communication on, on organizing how to do this best for our departments, because our departments have different work, rotation shifts, I, I still don't know how the police work, I know how we work, you know, and, and we, it, it's working, we, we're making sure that you're ongoing, um, you know, the, the current shift is gonna get it, as well as an outgoing shift, and we're keeping two shifts in reserve, the police are kinda doing the same thing with the man, the, the, the work shifts that they have. Um, so that's going well. We're also looking at, and we've had several meetings with the, the Board of Health on a potential community, either testing or vaccinations, this is ongoing, we don't have answers to this. We are, you know, we're watching what the, um, the CDC and the state health departments have on that to see if there's a limited capacity, we may be able to do that, either to set up a, a, a larger vaccination site, or, you know, different testing sites if needed. Um, the demand has not really been there yet, but we're not sure where this is going. Ultimately, I think you're gonna see the demand for, uh, certainly the vaccinations, and there's all kinds of different models out there, or theories on the best way to do that. We, we wanna make sure that whatever we can do to help, we're there, um, as well as all of our members. Most of the Fire Department membership has had training on, on both of these to, to either administer the vaccinations and certainly the testing if it's needed, we wanna be able to be ready for this if that call arises. Um, also under the CARES Act, um, and again, this is a federal fund set aside to, to help communities, businesses, whatever, for dealing with COVID, um, and I cannot thank Scott and Sue enough for assisting us uh, for the amount of workload that they've done, not just my department, but townwide, I don't know how you've done it, but I cannot thank you for that. Um, some of the major purchases, just the Fire Department was able to get from this in, in coordination with them, is we've got that C nineteen vehicle, the, the Chevy Tahoe, which came fully equipped with, with EMS equipment. We were able to upgrade our older spare A three ambulance, uh, that is fully stocked and fully um, working out a full ALS advanced life support level. We were able to get two cardiac monitors, one for the Chevy Tahoe, one for A three. A three was a spare ambulance, which is really not fully equipped, it was certainly not at the ALS level. Now, I cannot staff three ambulances, but we are operating three ambulances, because now that we're able to bring A three up with all of the appropriate equipment, which is very expensive, um, we can immediately put that, that in service, and we have been. We're operating two ambulances out of Station Two and one ambulance out of Headquarters, all at ALS level. And how we're doing this is, if, if it's a known or suspected positive case, we're, we're sending one specific ambulance to that, when we can, there's an ambulance going either way, but we're trying to minimize some of the decontamination time by, by having three ambulances in the mix. Uh, we've never done this before, and it's working remarkably, we've been doing this since, um, I, I think the end of November, when we started this. Um, it's done well, some of the other items we were able to get is we were able to upgrade the stretcher on A three. We were able to upgrade and install a stretch lift system on A four. That was gonna be a very expensive capital requests, um, article at a future town meeting. We now no longer need that, because we were able to fund that out of COB, out of the CARES Act. Um, we have brand new fire reporting software for the entire department. This is different from the new software that we're using with the apparatus. This is a complete Fire Department reporting software that we use in the day-to-day operations in the Fire Department, we're writing up the fire calls, the fire reports. Um, very expensive program, but we're able to cover it from the, the CARES Act, because as an added bonus on this, it also tracks and records all of the COVID exposures, um, that we have had. So this is keeping the community safe, and certainly keeping the fighter, fighters in the, in the paramedics safe, so that down the line, if there is any question, we can immediately track everything. The other older software that we have simply had none of this, this is a much more user-friendly software, it's a much more modern software, we, we are working on this today, actually, it's in service and all the separate modules are coming in place. The COVID portion was the first part to go in. Um, that, that's, we've completely retooled this Fire Department in the last six months by taking advantage of some of those federal funds that were out there. Uh, and just a number of miscellaneous items throughout the fire stations to try to reduce the, the risk of the, you know, contamination, we have old buildings, as you know, we'll, we'll discuss that. We're, we, we don't have a lot of room for social distancing, so in working with the schools, school maintenance, I was able to find some, it, it's a glorified air purifier for each room, and the schools have them for the classrooms. We, we purchased a number of them for the fire stations, because now that everything, we're in the winter months, and all the windows are shut tight, and this is one of the reasons we're seeing a spike everywhere, because, you know, throughout the, the spring, summer, and fall months, most windows are still open, we weren't really tight, but we're tight now, because it was eighteen degrees this morning, all the windows are down, the heat's on, everybody's rebreathing the same air, so we have these, um, fairly large air purifiers that are all throughout our buildings. When Sue and Scott found out what we purchased, they jumped on the bandwagon and bought them for most of the departments in town as well, and I think they're working out well. Um, there's been an incredible amount of, um, partnership with all of the town departments working through this over the last year, and that continues, it's, that really, w- we're all sharing our strengths and experiences with each other to get through this, uh, just so that we can keep all the services going for the residents, ultimately. Another aspect I'd like to talk about, and I know that there's been a lot of discussion in town, uh, is some of the fire prevention concerns. There's been a lot of major projects in town that are either on the planning boards or, um, halfway through construction that, that we've been dealing with, it's been very time-consuming. I'll start with the Zero Summer Street project, we have been to a number of the planning board meetings on this project. This was the commuter rail tax incentive program, I, I'm not saying that correctly, but this was the large project they wanted to put next to the MBTA station. We had multiple, multiple meetings, not only with the planning board, but also with the building proponent, you know, looking at, you know, trying to get their plans back in line to our realistic operations for a small apartment. Ultimately, that project was withdrawn by the proponent, but I don't believe that land is, he, he, I think they're gonna come back to the town with, with new ideas, and we'll begin that whole process again. Again, these are very time-consuming, and, and we're doing it, but the Deputy Fire Chief is the fire prevention, he leads the fire prevention division, and it's really a one-man show. Which I'll get into in a minute. Another major project that has been incredibly time-consuming for the Fire Department, as well as the Building Department, is Ten Railroad Street. Ten Railroad Street is a former New England art building, and I know there's been a lot of discussion in town on this, a lot of concern, and I can assure you, the Fire Department is concerned with this as well, and we have had multiple, multiple meetings and inspections in that building. Uh, the last one was last week, late last week, where I had the entire Fire Department Command Staff that literally went through every square foot of that building, and I'm not kidding. I'm talking all floors, the towers, the basement, the courtyards, and surrounding the building. Uh, you know, we spent several hours there, it was myself, the deputy, and the four captains inspecting the building, making sure they're up on code compliance, making sure my captains are aware exactly what's going on throughout the entire building, because God forbid anything happens there, they're the first ones in. Myself and the deputy, we will be there, but we're not first do, they are. So we're making sure that the Fire Department is highly organized and planned with that building. We're satisfied right now, they're meeting every code requirement, everything is working, they're, they're maintaining it. I don't wanna say much on the status of that building or project, because I don't wanna do anything to interfere with possibly could be um, a private either sale or transfer, or just the ongoing project itself. But I can tell you, and I can assure you, the Fire Department and the Building Department, we have multiple meetings and inspections in that building, and it's ongoing, and regardless of the status of that project or that building, or whoever owns it, we're on it, and we have been since day one. Um, I'm, I'm trying to give some reassurance to the residents, as well as you, that we are absolutely doing our homework on that. Um, almost on a, literally on a daily basis. There's a lot of other projects that are going on in town as well, we have the Chestnut Street project, that you see, there's a clearing up there in the wooded area of Chestnut Street, opposite the State Park, that's gonna be a, um, a fairly large industrial park, which is new for Abington, it's an industrial storage type buildings, there, there are space metal buildings, like you see, it's kinda like a, a small wing of like the Avon Industrial Park, if anybody's familiar with that, that, that's how I think it's gonna be. Um, it's not residential, I think the town's been asking for more industry or commerce for years, that's what's going on up there. There's a lot of inspections up there. That's what's going on up there. There's a lot of inspections up there. They're still in the Philly clearing stages now. But once those structures start to get built, that is gonna be very time consuming for the deputy. Uh, he's up there. We, we have on paper, we have to look at the plans and make sure that they're adequate. Both in terms of they're meeting fire codes for the sprinkler system in, in the building and also for the fire apparatus. Um, access. We have to be able to get in there and, and then get back out. Um, you know, there's a lot of time with that. Then, once they, they start actually building the buildings, we have, there, there's numerous times when we do, um, hydrostatic pressure testing of the, the water supply piping going to it, the sprinkler system going into it. And then we get into it. Once the building's done, you know, the sprinkle head locations, distances, the pressures, the firearm system, the entire project. They become very time consuming. We're looking at the Randolph Street project. That's where the old one twenty-one Randolph Street is. Now it's condominiums. It's almost built up, but not quite. There, there's still building in that. Um, in, as, again, as those buildings are built, not only just the main structure and the main sprinkler piping has to be inspected, but each individual unit has to have their own, um, inspection and certification of smoke detector and carbon monoxide. Um, testing so that they can then occupy that. Um, the deputies, again, on his own, he's doing this. Um, scheduling all these, when we can, during COVID, that slowed down that division because we were not able to go in some of the buildings. We found ways around it. He's still going to the buildings now, but we, we're somewhat, he ends off, we, we've still backed off on that somewhat. That's caused a further backlog in some of the annual inspections that we normally do. We're, we're getting the main ones done, but we're not going into some buildings for both to protect both us and them. So there, there is somewhat of a backlog there. There's numerous projects still on Bedford Street being built or being planned. And one of the areas the deputy has been spending a lot of time on is preparing for we know what is coming with marijuana licensing and possibly some larger either grow or other distribution, um, marijuana commerce sites that could be coming. And, and it's not a typical, typical business. It, it, you know, some of the smaller sites, if it's just a retail, it's kinda like a bank. That's not a big deal for us. Um, it, it's, you know, it's more of a high security. If we're getting into any possible growing type of, um, occupancies and, and I don't know if they're coming, but at town meeting, it appeared that there could be, and it, it could be good business for the town with, with funding coming in. They're a different animal because they have carbon dioxide generators in some of these units, which it, it literally floods the, some of the spaces with carbon dioxide. Which if we're not careful, if we walk in there with a fire alarm, we could be poisoning our, our firefighters. So it, it's, this is new for us. So we've done a lot of research on this already. We're making sure we know what the codes are so that if and when they do present these to the town, we wanna make sure we're able to, to deal with that. Um, if, if and then they do come, again, then we get into the, the inspection process with that. So where I'm going with this is the, there's a lot of growth in town and there's continued questions, what may be going on Spruce Street, not just one location, one, one building. But is there a potential corridor going into some of the massive land that's at the airbase? And if that takes off, if, you know, there's other quarries that could go in there as well. There's a lot of land there. We, that we don't know what's going on. If that ever explodes into growth, my department is, is one of the ones tasked with doing all of the prep and inspection work for that as we go. As well as the building department. The building department has a staff. We have one deputy fire chief who really doesn't do the role of a deputy fire chief. He's doing strictly inspectional roles. And as all of this new continued growth is coming, and I know financially it's healthy for the town, it adds to the burden of him trying to do the annual inspections of the buildings that are, have been in town for years. And we just continually keep growing and adding to that. So I'm gonna close with, Ian, I know with Scott and Sue, uh, there, we, we've been directed with the, the ongoing budget process to, to submit a level service budget. And I understand that. I've had many budget. Um, many years of budget, um, policies going through the budget process, uh, even before I was chief. I, I, I get it. I completely understand. However, I, I would respectfully request that perhaps we can take another look at my request to try and get another day position to assist the fire prevention division. We desperately need it. We need it more than ever. I understand the funding. I know we're trying to go for level service. That the only problem is the town does not have a level growth. The growth isn't continuing to, to, to increase. And I'm really not seeing an end to that. And, and these projects are getting more complex because we're trying to compress large, complex projects, whether it's a housing project, whether it's a, a marijuana type project or just any type of a, a commercial project into much smaller areas of land because we're building out the town. And it, and it, it takes a lot more time to, to try to figure how this is gonna work. So again, we're, we're a one-man, one, one-person operation when it comes to all of these projects going. And one of my concerns is we don't wanna miss something because either, you, either we overworked or rushed it. That if something gets past us, the town at that point is, is really stuck with whatever is physically built for years because we've already seen this in a couple of projects. And I'm not gonna name the projects, but they're much the access getting into some of these projects is much tighter than we anticipated it was gonna be. On paper, it looked good. And on paper, it was legal. It met the legal requirement for the minimum, um, street width to get in. The reality that we're discovering is if you park one small vehicle anywhere along that axis going in, you can't get the ambulance in. It's not the ladder truck. Everybody thinks the tower truck. We've got this monster vehicle. The tower truck's the most narrow vehicle that we have, believe it or not. The ambulance is the widest vehicle. And we, we have, whether it's a roundabout or just a, a street going into a larger complex. They are so tight because we're building these projects in smaller portions of land. You park ones, you park a Prius in there. Some of these, we're having trouble getting the ambulance though. And then you add a winter to that in the snowbanks and it's an issue. Um, and we're already dealing with some of the developers after it has been approved because we're, we're realizing what's going on. You know, we, we're trying to prevent this from being a, a, a chronic problem going forward for the next fifty years as these projects are gonna get built. So again, I respectfully ask if there's any new positions in town. This, this is a critical one that if you could, um, consider that. That being said, the final report, it'll be brief because I, I'm anticipating questions if you have them, is the fire station project itself. As you know, that you put together a, a committee last year, uh, it seems like ten years ago on looking to see where the fire department, you know, could be with a potential new fire station. And ultimately, the, that committee, and I'm not speaking for the committee, but they're not here, so I'll give a synopsis. That committee recommended a new, modern centralized fire station to be built. The best location is on the land on Glenavitt Way, opposite the high school. Um, and then COVID hit and everything kinda came to a grinding halt. Because that report came out in the end of March, early April. What timing? It, it is what it is and we get it. So we've had several meetings with, with the town manager, with the, you know, at least the chairman of the building committee themselves to kinda see, you know, we, we, we got through the rest of the year. We had to. We, we understood. But our problem's not going away either. And if anything, it's, it's more crowded here than ever, especially with the, you know, the, the concerns about trying to social distance and, and whatnot. And, and we're doing the best we can. And again, our, our report card with so far all negative COVID testing with, with my entire department is great. We're still in a very tight, tight space and, and I'm not gonna waste your time because I think you've heard this many times. And we, we wanna get the information back out there. And, and I think the next step is we're, we're trying to pick up, you know, now that the, the holidays are over into the first of the year, reeducating the residents as to what our concerns and needs would be. Um, and, and just trying to, you know, educate what the project may be. Ian, possibly, you know, being able to, to be able to present a, a warrant article in, in the next town meeting for either a portion of this or you know, I guess at that point to, to put it in the hands of the residents and to see what direction, if any, the town may wanna take on this, to see what could solve our problems because the longer we wait, I think the, the overall price of any project, it's only gonna increase. The time to build a fire station was twenty years ago. We didn't do it. We couldn't. We get it. That's why, whatever the price is now, that's why it is twenty years ago, it would have been much cheaper. Twenty years from now, when the, the needs are still gonna be even greater, you're probably gonna double that price again. Um, and gentlemen, that's my report unless you have any, any questions.
Are you planning on doing a public meeting to, uh, discuss the fire station?
Yeah, we were. I know that the, um, the building committee wanted to put together ideally it would have been in person. I don't think that's happening anytime soon. So it'll probably be a Zoom type meeting. Or, you know, we can try to do some taped things, but you know, we'd rather have a, a question and answer period so that if there are any residents, they could, you know, they could ask us. Again, COVID, you know, just the time that we're in, that's it's a challenge, but we'll get, we'll find a way to get over it. Just we're doing this meeting tonight. Um, ideally it would have been a, a large forum and like when we went to the high school, we had ample times to, to let residents attend, to educate them. Um, and, and we can have some question and answer periods. A little bit more difficult, not impossible, but there's, there's more challenges to that right now. But yes, we do definitely wanna try to get some, you know, some education out there for whomever has questions.
Okay. Thank you, chief. Any other questions for the chief? Okay, thank you again.
Okay, thank you folks. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, chief.
Uh, next up is town manager's report. Scott?
Yeah, okay. So, um, I sent you guys an email late in the day. I don't know if you have it, but it is a preliminary budget document. Um, so right now, um, like we said, it's preliminary. We've sent things out to the departments. Things have come back. Um, we've got a, uh, currently a deficit of about a million three seven five-ish. Um, that's not including, uh, numbers from the school, which I think you, or it's not, it, it's not including what you got in your packet today for the school budget, which was looking for a five point, uh, eight percent increase. It's, uh, my budget was carrying something more realistic in my mind. Um, that being said, we've, we've gotta go back to the drawing board. We have more work to do on our end. Um, we'll be meeting with the school and the administration over there. We'll be meeting with the department heads to try and obviously close that gap, uh, between now and town meeting. And uh, we're just getting to that point where, you know, we'll be meeting again with department heads and then meeting with finance committee. Uh, but the budget's there. Please take a look at it and we can discuss it more after you've had a chance to review it. Um, that being said, I'll jump into some other issues. The health department, as, um, as chief not all admit, uh, they do have their hands on, um, COVID vaccine. They are storing it and they are getting ready and prepared to um, start, uh, issuing it to some of the first responders. I think they have a um, some dates scheduled where they'll start rolling it out and shifts. Um, like to thank John Stone. I think you guys, I, I sent off that emails. Kinda hard to remember. It's been a while since we met. It's actually, I don't think we've met since last year. So trying to keep everything that we've had since then, but, um, so was, uh, we got from John Stone that National Grid is going to be converting eight hundred plus streetlights to LEDs. Uh, the work's gonna take place mostly overnight and estimated to take approximately a year. Uh, National Grid's performing the conversion in-house with no cost to the town. Uh, they're even paying for the cost of police details. On our end, our, uh, savings are estimated to be around forty thousand. There will be upon completion, uh, those are an annual savings of forty thousand, by the way, a, uh, one-time rebate of fifty-one thousand. Um, the kilowatt hour savings of over two hundred thousand, um, which makes us eligible for future grant opportunities through National Grid. Obviously it's a high quality light, um, they last much longer. Um, it's just, you know, uh, overall, it's, it's a safer light and, uh, more effective. Thank you to John for getting that done. Um, I know when I, I first came on, there were some, there was some work going on with the consultant to try and, um, secure some bids for it. And actually, once, when I got the bids in, they really weren't that favorable for what we would have asked for, um, there was a lot of upfront money that we would have needed from town meeting that we just aren't in a position to go out and ask for. So this is sort of, this is a win-win. Um, I'd like to thank Abington Celebrates. As you know, uh, since the last time we talked, banners have gone up. The banners have gone up on Glenawitz and, um, in the downtown sections and, and they look great. We were trying to secure, um, monies for those banners through um, a grant in the, we did not receive the first round of that grant, but we're still pursuing, um, pursuing it. But in the, in the interim, uh, Amican Celebrates had, um, purchased those banners. So we wanna, um, thank them for that. Uh, putting together a trash collection work group, as you'll see within that budget document, um, line item for our trash collection is about a million four. A very large ticket item and the, um, contract that we have right now is due to expire. And so, um, I, I wanna get a working group together just to kind of look at all of our options before we go and, and sign a new contract in case we wanna do something different. Uh, if there's issues with the way we have been doing it, um, I wanna review other options, other ways towns, other towns are doing it. And just to see if there's anything that we can come up with before we, um, sign this agreement, um, which by the way, we'll have to sort of figure out by the end of March, DEP wants it all wrapped up by then. So I do have two commitments from, um, the finance committee and two commitments from the board of health. And I'm looking for two, um, volunteers from the board of selectmen. Uh, like I said, I'll make it a, uh, you know, it, it'll be very, fairly quick. It, it, the work will be done by the end of March. Um, won't have to meet a lot on it, but certainly I, I do want some input before we go into another long-term agreement on, like I said, such a a big ticket item. I'd like to find a way to get that, get that down and look at some other options that are available to us.
You looking for volunteers tonight?
Yeah, I'd like to know. Uh, Jim, I know you would maybe mention you'd be interested.
Yeah.
And anybody else? Alex, you love.
I will.
Oh, Mike, you're in.
Yep.
All right. Thanks, guys. And I'll, I'll get an email. Um, while we're talking about working groups and committees, the capital committee has been formed. Uh, Sue got, um, I think she sent something out to everybody who's going to be on that committee. Um, Sue, do you wanna mention anything about it or other than we're gonna be getting together soon? Do you wanna give them a timeline and? I think they're muted.
Kevin, I said.
Kevin, can you unmute Sue? Sue, can you unmute you?
Okay, so we have Tim and two members from the finance committee. Um, citizens at large are Marty Golightly, Chris Coyle from the school committee, Alex Haggerty, Steve Wakelin and Rick Smith. And I sent them all out an email today and hopefully we can meet next week and get this started so we can, um, be ready for a town meeting.
And you know, at this point, we don't know what we have available for funds. Obviously it's a tight year, but we wanna obviously get this process going because it's gonna be something continually year after year. Um, let's see. Other than that, I wanted to mention, uh, town hall is by appointment only right now. Um, everyone's there. We're there to serve everybody. Anything that you need, um, all the departments are open and people are available. If you could call, uh, email, let us know what you need. If we can't do it, we certainly will find a way to meet with you. Um, we will, you know, by appointment, get you into town hall. We've, we've got uh, uh, meeting rooms all set up that are, are designed for, you know, a quick meeting or as long as it takes, we um, will protect anybody coming into the offices and protect the, the employees that are there.
And of course, the drive-through, Scott.
And the drive-through is open.
For everything, all drop-offs.
If you need to drop anything off to the bin out front, or you can come through the drive-through for anything that you need to drop off for any of the departments. Um, and that's it. I think next week we're gonna have, uh, we will have a, a operational update from, uh, deputy chief Chris Cutter.
That's on the twenty-fifth. That's on the twenty-fifth, right? The our next meeting? Is what you have scheduled?
That is correct, sir.
Scott, on the um. On the streetlights, we had red capped a bunch of them. I don't know the number back in the day. Are those all getting uncapped? Because of this LED project?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure, but I, you know, with the number, when we have excess of eight hundred, I doubt if we have. Many more than maybe eight hundred and fifty or so throughout the town, so I would assume.
Yeah.
I will, I will check it and I'm assuming that you red capped them and and for savings of money, not because they were broken?
Yeah, I I think they. I thought I'd heard that they might have removed the broken ones, red capped the other ones some money.
I'll check into that with John, though.
Okay. Be great to uh get some more lights in town. Some of these streets are pretty dark at night, you know?
The LED lights really do make a really big difference.
Yeah.
Scott.
Yes.
On the upcoming police chief search, do we have a uh timeline yet or um?
So, yeah.
For that?
We'll be, we'll be contacting, probably next month, we'll start, um, we'll contract with the firm. Uh, Jamie Kenny and I from Clifford and Kenny were talking about it, but uh, they have some recommendations, but we'll contact, we'll. We'll work with an outside agency to start a search. And uh, the idea is, I mean, we obviously. Need somebody for the end of August, so we're sort of backing it up to uh making a selection. You know, early July to mid-July, so. Started a search. You know, March, April. You know, that's kind of gets us into that right timeframe.
Some of the vacations and everything else, I'm sure it'll be tough.
If they want to be chief bad enough, they'll find.
If they have vacations this year with COVID.
Scott, I did look over the budget quickly that you sent tonight. Um. I won't get into too many, but I'm just curious on the health insurance. Are we in a group now or are we still on our own?
No, actually, I addressed that in my budget memo. Um, so we are self-insured. And um, that, yeah, that number that we're carrying is fairly high. It's a. Um, a ten percent number because mostly because, A, we are self-insured. Uh, a lot of. Other. Groups saw a drop in uh claims over the COVID period where we didn't see that drop. So it wasn't even that we we didn't have any bad uh loss experiences, but we didn't have a drop in experiences. Um, so that's, you know, in essence, we're, you know, our rates are going up. We expect it to end up actually lower. Um, that was kind of my first numbers and they're they're looking, you know, that between now and. Between now and town meeting, we're hoping to see it, you know, below nine anyways, but um, right now, that's the number we're carrying and and. Um, we are also getting into the process, reaching out to other communities that have similar claims experience that like us. Um. You know, it it may be, whether it's Whitman, Rockland, um, you know, Holbrook, whatever, but. You know, similar sized communities that are um outside or looking to be outside of the Mayflower group that. Um, you know, want a pool with us is 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 the larger the pool than, you know, the the.
When we got out of Mayflower in two thousand seventeen or eighteen, that was supposed to be the goal to partner up, and it hasn't happened yet. And I think it's cost us an awful lot of money in the last three or four years, getting out of Mayflower and doing it ourselves. So I would uh definitely like to look at partnering up with some other communities. Or maybe look into Mayflower again. But we wasted an awful lot of money in the last four or five years, and this isn't on you, Scott, this was before you got there. But um, we wasted an awful lot of money in the last four or five years by doing what we did. Without a plan in place. To uh replace Mayflower. And uh, that was my issue at the time. I have no problem looking at another plan, but just to get out, just for the sake of getting out and funding us out. It it just didn't make sense, and it ended up, as it turned out, costing us a lot of money. So I would definitely like to look into. Another type of group or Mayflower or whatever, but uh, we can't continue doing it ourselves.
Yeah, and I, like I said, you know, I I've I've reached out um. Myself, and I know that we we have a um, a company that's working with us, uh, some consultants or. Brokers and and they're also reaching out to some other communities, but again, they need to have sort of a similar similar community with. Similar claims experiences and, you know, obviously. Uh, our claims experiences have to be attractive to them. So, you know, we're, I think, from what I understand, we're in fairly good shape and and. Um, you know, as as far as that goes, but still. Um, we we need them to want to partner up also.
Correct.
But we'll see. We're working on it, though.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the town manager?
I have one thing I'd like to um get on the agenda. Again, I know uh, Tim, you, I and Scott mentioned this um. Last fall, but these uh clothes collection bins. I'd like to get that on an agenda with Marty at a meeting. I know Marty was looking into that. Um. The situation's just not getting any better. And just for those who are watching, the other members, um. These clothes collection bins, and there's one on Route eighteen and one twenty-three that, I mean, people are just throwing everything there. And I wanted to know if we. Permitted those? And do we have a contact? Uh, to get them cleaned up and the property owners. A lot of these property owners are getting paid to have these bins on their property. So if that's the case, we need to uh have some rules in place, and I think Marty has looked into it. And we had put it off till after the first of the year, so I'd like to get that on on the agenda.
Yeah, and I've talked to Marty about it, and we do actually. He has, um, he's put together, um. You know, some model bylaws that I think ultimately could either be passed uh by this board, maybe easier to have them passed by the board of health, but. Certainly, uh, something that we can all review. It makes sense.
Scott, could you?
Go, go ahead. I have one more thing.
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, Alex.
Um, uh, the tax, um. Property tax that's due. Uh, February first, I believe, is the next one due. Um. Oh. I know we um discussed waiving any late fees and extending the deadline before. Um, is that still in effect for going into into this year?
I don't know. Sue, did we talk to Sonia about that? I don't know where.
As of right now, no. There, there's no, people are paying their taxes and we're not waiving any fees. I guess we'll we'll look at uh where we stand come February. Um, February first as to who paid and who hasn't paid, and we'll talk to Scott about that at the time.
Okay. Most of the taxes are paid through the mortgages anyway. Is that correct, Sue?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. That's all I have. I'm sorry, Kevin. Go ahead.
No, it was just some of the small, um. On up in Washington Street in the square, there was, there's like a couch and there's some other. Stuff on the curb. It looks like it's been there for quite some time. I walked by it the other day. Um, obstructing the sidewalk a little bit. Can you talk to the health department and see if they? Doing anything with that or fines or anything?
Yeah, whereabouts was it?
Uh, right near the old Mary Lou's on Washington Street.
Yeah, I'll I'll see if uh they.
I mean, it was.
More aware of it.
Definitely a color was soaked and been out there for a while and. A hazard.
I keep that there in case my wife kicks me out. You know, a place to crash. Any other questions, Scott? All right, I'll take a motion then.
Motion to adjourn.
Again.
Any discussion, all those in favor of rejoining? Say aye.
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 I'm unanimous. Good night, guys.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, guys.